I'd like to call the City Caucus meeting to order for Tuesday, October 14th, 2025. We have one public hearing this evening. If the clerk could please read.
Public hearing number one regarding the proposed 2026 operating and capital budget for the city of Schenectady.
Thank you. We have nineteen items for original consideration. The clerk could please read item number one.
Item number one for original consideration, a resolution calling for a public hearing for amendments to section 183-6 of the Schenectady City Code clarifying acceptable forms of identification and authorizations for business owners and operators for business certificates of use applications.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number two.
Item number two for original consideration, a resolution transmitting to the Schenectady City Planning Commission, proposed amendments to the Schenectady City Code, Chapter 264.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number three.
Item number three for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept $45,928 in grant monies from the Governor's Traffic Safety Committee for the Schenectady Police Department.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number four.
Item number four for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept $341,142 from the National Grid New York Electric Vehicle Make Ready Program for the city of Schenectady.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number five.
Item number five for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a letter of intent with New Leaf Energy Incorporated to lease a portion of 300 Anthony Street for the use of a battery engine energy storage facility.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number six.
Item number six for original consideration, a resolution amending Resolutions 2022-9 and 2022-224 to reallocate American Rescue Plan Act funding for the BCNI Hamilton Hill Infowall Project.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number seven.
Item number seven for original consideration, a resolution transmitting to the Schenectady City Planning Commission, proposed rezoning of certain parcels on Maxon Road.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number eight.
Item number eight for original consideration, a resolution in support of funding for the Hamilton Hill Art Center.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number nine.
Item number nine for original consideration, a resolution declaring that the city council has a lead agency with the J Street Connector project.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number ten.
Item number ten for original consideration, a resolution declaring that the renovation of the Central Park Casino into the Schenectady Environmental Education Center is not subject to a state environmental quality review.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number eleven.
Item number eleven for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of a vacant lot at 506 Schenectady Street for $10,000.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number twelve.
Item number twelve for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of a vacant lot at 1118 Fourth Avenue for $2,000.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number thirteen.
Item number thirteen for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of a vacant lot at 1306 Fifth Avenue for $15,800.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number fourteen.
Item number fourteen for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of a vacant lot at 1520 Fifth Avenue for $2,500.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number fifteen.
Item number fifteen for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the redemption and withdrawal of SBL 30.76-2-1.2 from foreclosure.
Discuss in committee without objection and on consent. Item number sixteen.
Item number sixteen for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the mayor or his designate to enter into supplemental agreement number one with New York State Department of Transportation for the Franklin Street Cycle Track, PIN number 1761.60.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number seventeen.
Item number seventeen for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a tax or share reaction by the owner of property located at 624 McClellan Street.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number eighteen.
Item number eighteen for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a claim by Nationwide Insurance, ASO Ronald Gordon and Mary Van Alssine Gordon.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number nineteen.
Item number nineteen for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a claim by Crystal Gonzalez.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. If there's nothing more to come before the City Council Caucus, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Mr. Mutverin, seconded by Ms. Patrick. All those in favor? I'd like to call to order the Schenectady City Council meeting for Tuesday, October 14th, 2025. And I'd like to call on Pastor William L. Hamilton to lead us in the prayer from Fringe of Baptist Church.
Let us pray. Gracious God, our Father, Creator of the heaven and earth, we ask your blessing upon this gathering of city officials, public servants, community leaders, and community members as they strive to serve the best interests of the citizens of Schenectady. We invoke your presence and welcome your wisdom in every discussion, every discourse, and every decision today. We ask to continue to bless our leaders, our city, our communities, and our families. This we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. And we are blessed to have two ministers here with us tonight, so I'd like Father Frisone from Mark Carmel to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If the clerk could please call the roll.
Mr. Toro?
Present.
Mr. Farley?
Here.
Mr. Mutverin?
Present.
Ms. Patrick?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Please.
Ms. Porterfield?
Here.
Ms. Patrick? No? Okay, all right. We have one public hearing this evening, and I just want to remind everyone that we have extended the public comment period for public hearing to four minutes. Just also remind people, if you're speaking on the public hearing, it's only what the public hearing is about this evening. Thank you. Public hearing number one is regarding the proposed 2026 operating budget for the city of Schenectady. And I have eight people signed up to speak. The first person is Joe Anderson. Haley Vaccaro.
Good evening. So weird being on this end of things. Council president, city council mayor, and speaking in my capacity as a city resident, homeowner, and president of Boulevard Appreciation Neighborhood Association, also known as BANA. With my years in the city, previously covering the city as a reporter, and being involved with several local boards and nonprofits, I hope things would never get so dire that I had to speak during a council meeting. I was very conflicted in doing so today, but deeply troubled that I felt I had no choice. I have been proud to be a cheerleader for Schenectady. Schenectady is a shining example of how a city can turn around years of industrial decline and start anew while still embracing its culture and history. Crime has decreased, downtown has become a destination, Mohawk Harbor has been transformed, and surrounding areas and neighborhoods have seen investment and hope, with more work still to be done though, of course. As rents downtown and everywhere steadily climb, I decided it made more financial sense and a better long-term investment to purchase my first home here in the city I love, which was very exciting. But unfortunately for many, the cost of housing continues to increase. In addition to increasing costs for groceries, utilities, and other necessities, people are struggling, can't afford a decent quality of life, and some must choose between purchasing food for their families or paying their bills. So this year's whopping 17% tax increase, and again, 17%, and another significant increase in garbage fees proposed in the mayor's budget is just inexcusable and unacceptable. The mayor says the issue is loss of ARPA funding and increasing healthcare costs, but ARPA funding we knew was a one-time opportunity and went to several capital projects and struggling nonprofits, and every municipality is facing increasing healthcare costs, yet none have proposed this massive tax increase. So something doesn't really add up. The casino was supposed to decrease taxes, and now they're asking for a reduction, which must be addressed and dismissed. We have cannabis shops in the city that are supposedly bringing in tax revenue. We have all the development and progress over the years that should be expanding our tax base, but instead, this budget is moving us backwards rather than forward and puts individuals and families at risk. On top of the large tax increase, there is the issue of garbage collection. The sticker program with fees for bulk items was botched with a poor rollout, and the program isn't really enforceable. It's just another burden on the average homeowner while still increasing garbage fees in this budget. Clearly, how we do sanitation needs to be reevaluated and overhauled. On top of that, the city is looking to do a citywide reassessment, potentially starting the process next year, I believe, which will agree, again, increase the amount some homeowners pay in taxes based on their assessed home values. So while we thought Schenectady was on the up, the unfortunate reality that this budget is telling us is actually the opposite. All of these increases cannot be permitted to move forward for the future of Schenectady and the lives of our residents. Cuts need to be made, and efficiencies need to be found, while expanding the tax base and bringing in more revenue. So I urge the mayor and the city council to do their due diligence and really work together to address these glaring issues for our future. Because Schenectady is a great city, I love Schenectady, and it has such a strong sense of community that we really exemplify throughout New York State. But all of that is unfortunately really being threatened here by this budget. So, thank you.
Okay, the next person, it's Louis. His last name starts with an S. Scioscia Ketti. Close.
Good evening. I am here because I, what I do for work is I set up potential appointments for potential homeowners, and I noticed that when I went to try to find out information, a solicitor's permit here is $500. And considering that Clifton Park is 200.
Excuse me, sir?
Yes.
Are you speaking to the budget? Because that's what this public hearing is about. If not, I would have to move you to another part of the agenda. This is specifically about the budget.
Okay. I do apologize about that.
It's not a problem, not at all. I'll move you to general city business, okay? And we'll call you again.
So, so that may...
So, yes, you'd have to, if it's not about the budget, that's what the public hearing is about, I'll put you on another part of the agenda to speak to any city business. This is specifically about the budget, but please stay.
Right here?
No, not right there. So I'll call you again.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sean Radigan?
Yeah, hey, I'm Sean Radigan, and I'm here tonight because I'm opposed to the 2026 budget proposal. This proposed budget, I estimate, would increase my monthly mortgage payments by at least $50 a month, and I'm already severely housing burdened as I pay over 50% of my income toward my housing. And it's not like I don't make nothing. I make like $75,000 a year, so I can only imagine how the rest of the city is doing. At a time where jobs are being lost, federal medical aid is being slashed, and consumer protections are being eliminated, I need my local government to not make the situation worse. The narrative that I've heard to justify this budget is that a loss of ARPA funds created a $6 million deficit. Well, I just don't think that narrative is accurate, since the ARPA funds that are listed from 2025 are listed as $3 million. Since I haven't heard any other justifications for this budget in an official capacity, I started to look at the numbers myself. In a breadth-first analysis, the general fund is at about $120,500,000. The water, sewer, and golf funds all appear to transfer funds to other funds, so I'll make the assumption that those are relatively standalone. If you look at the largest cost centers of the general fund, they are employee benefits at 35.8%, the police department at 20.8%, the fire department at 11.6%, and then debt service at 8.3%. I'm seeing that employee benefits includes a $17 million going, payment to MVP for insurance, a cost that would be mitigated if we would all just support the New York Health Act, but that's off topic. So, since I don't want employee benefits to suffer, let's take a look at the police department, which is the second-largest strain on the budget and one-fifth of the general fund. The police chief is listed at a salary of $185,000.7, $185,700, which seems like a lot. So I looked up the average pay for a police chief in Albany, and it's about $100,000. So why does our, why do our police chiefs make $85,000 more than Albany? The assistant police chiefs make $181,000, lieutenants make $115,000, sergeants $101,000, officers make 50, 70, 50, 60, 70, 80, or 90,000 depending on the grade and department. The budget lists 184.5 headcount for the police department, consuming $25 million of the general fund. The fire department lists 125.8 headcount, consuming 40% less at $14 million of the general fund. While the police department is down in spending by $671,000, that's only 2.6% of their budget line. To make up for that, though, in capital projects, the police department is asking for three SUVs, four unmarked cars, one parking, whatever that means, and an evidence vehicle, whatever that means too. And the evidence storage solution, and that all costs $796,000. So let me level with you. Times are hard right now. People are on fixed incomes, and they're severely housing burdened. We went over this during the Good Cause Eviction talks a number of times. Depending on ZIP code, people are 40 to 50% of people are housing burdened. They're paying more than 30% of their income to keep a roof over their head. We're being asked to do more with less, and frankly, I can't believe that our police department employs 184 people with a large portion of them making the same wage as an Albany police chief. So let me summarize for what I'm looking for. I want more transparency. This budget was clearly made with Excel, and I'm working off of a PDF, which makes it incredibly difficult to analyze. I want a tiered tax system that taxes, that taxes the have, haves, more than the have-nots. I want more focus on big cost centers such as benefits, police, fire, and debt. I want more money being invested in infrastructure solutions and not police and enforcement. Stop issues by fundamentally solving them, not by sending out another person on patrol. I can't, I can only imagine what we would do with 25 million budgeted infrastructure solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellie Pepper?
Good evening, Mayor, Madam President, City Council members. My name is Ellie Pepper, and I'm a Schenectady resident who follows these budgets closely because they shape the lives of families, seniors, and working people who make this city what it is. The proposed 2026 budget raises total city spending to about $120 million, a 3.17% increase over last year. It raises the property tax rate from 13.3% to 15.77% per thousand, a 2.39% increase that exceeds the state tax cap. For many of us, that's not just a number, it's money that could cover groceries, prescriptions, or heating bills. Schenectady already has one of the highest property tax rates in the nation, and this increase will push us even higher. We were told that casino revenue would help lower taxes and stabilize the city's finances, so I have to ask, where is that money going? We were promised that the casino would bring huge tax reductions, but those savings never reached the residents. The public deserves to see exactly how much casino revenue the city has received, how it's been spent, and why we're still being asked to exceed the state cap. I understand that taxes are, or costs are rising. They're rising for everybody, for health insurance, retirement, and debt service. But before asking residents to pay more, there needs to be a clear plan for cost control. What steps are being taken to contain benefits, manage overtime, or refinance existing debt? Meanwhile, capital spending for the police department needs to be reined in. Why do we need four new unmarked vehicles next year? I understand they replace older cars, but this is not the time. If we're exceeding the state tax cap, nonessential replacements should wait. We also heard that crime is down, yet we're also told the department needs more hardware and software because crime is increasing, to the tune of a 51% increase in that line item. Those two things just can't be true. Either crime is down or it isn't. If the data show improvement, the spending should reflect that. And while many residents are tightening their belts, executive and management-level employees are receiving raises of 8% to 24%. For example, the mayor's executive secretary is getting a 9% increase, justified as a way to align with the police chief's executive secretary, who, by the way, is set for a 24% increase. These raises are hard to justify when the people footing the bill, the taxpayers, are lucky to see a 3% raise in a good year. We spent a lot of time this year talking about how rents are too damn high during the Good Cause Eviction debate. Well, here's the reality. These tax increases will land squarely on renters, too. When landlords see their property taxes rise, they will pass that cost along. So even tenants who don't own property will feel this, the same people who can least afford it. Departments that deliver direct public value are being cut or frozen, youth employment eliminated, even though it's one of the few proven preventive programs we have. Animal control, still one person. Fire department stretched thin with overtime and vacancies. If we're paying more, we should be seeing more, not less. Before final adoption, I urge the city to issue a plain-language, one-page summary explaining where the increases are, who benefits, and how outcomes will be measured. We need transparency and accountability and a commitment to stop using tax hikes as a default solution to budget problems. I'm not against investing in our city. I'm against doing it without a plan, without fairness, and without honesty about who bears the cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Dean Marabado?
Good evening, Madam President, City Council members, and mayor. My name is Dean Marabado, and I'm a longtime resident of the city of Schenectady. Why is it that large sums of money are always allotted to the Schenectady Police Department and the city's budget proposals? Some will answer that without that money, crime will increase, or that citizens will no longer be safe. What about directing large amounts of money to programs that can lead to a lesser need for policing? Not all citizens benefit from increased policing. To always be focusing on punishment as the means for controlling behavior leads to, one, minimal if any change in behaviors, two, job security for those in the business of policing, and three, a divided population. Put more money in the budget on equitable prevention and stop supporting an outdated institution that does not positively serve all the citizens of Schenectady. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Moore?
Good evening, City Council, Mayor McCarthy. I am a over-40-year resident of the city, previously a resident of the county, and I rise to bring up something that's a very small part of the budget, but I was quite surprised to read about it in the Gazette, and that is the loss of funding for teen employment in the city parks for Schenectady. With the rise in inflation that's expected, the loss of employment that's expected in the coming months and in the coming year, I think that a program that provides employment for teenagers is something that Schenectady should not give up. Once it's given up, it's very hard to restore. I note that the county is not doing the same, and I would ask that this be reconsidered. I'm a resident that lives near Central Park, and I find that teenagers working there in the summertime, as well as in other city parks, is a very useful use of our funds, and it's already hard for teenagers to find employment in retail as those jobs are being taken by older citizens. So I'd ask that you reconsider that particular cut, as small as it is in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Johnson?
Hey, I'm Eric Johnson, mayor, President of Porterfield Council. Good to be here tonight with you. My message is I'm looking forward to better teamwork as you're developing this budget this year. Last year had quite a bit of contention, and it was not the kind of cordiality and professional legislative behavior that I'd like to see out of my leaders. So I implore you to work across, you know, legislative and executive, to work through this as quickly as you can. There's a lot of work to be done, even though as a percentage of, when you take out the rate of inflation, this is only an increase of about a 1.4% budget on an annual basis. There's still a lot of cost increases that we need to deal with, healthcare, right? We've got the organized labors at the table. They should have a part of this conversation. It appears to me in analysis of your budget that there's some assumptions that need a second look. For instance, the casino has only gone from $3.9 million payment last year to $4 million this year, and $4.1 million with the next year's budget, and that just doesn't jive to me considering they were going to be big contributors to our bottom line. I saw a flat line on marijuana taxes, and that actually doesn't make sense to me because I think when I walk around, I smell a lot of things that would indicate that that industry is doing just fine. I find it hard to accept that the resident should pay the tax increase on their real estate tax and a 25% to 30% increase in their garbage fees and a 15% increase in their water fees. So there's hidden costs buried in this. There's some assumptions in this budget, which, you know, the mayor's staff does the best they can, but I think they need to be given a second look. And I just really encourage you all to work as closely as you can as our leaders to solve this problem so that we can all work forward. It is a rainy day, right? We have $2 million pulled out of your rainy day fund, and maybe it's time to reconsider buying the fancy new undercover police car or the improvements to the unused pump house in the Stockade. I just think that it's time to all tighten our belts and get a good budget together. So thanks very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So at this time, I have no one else signed up to speak on the public hearing for the budget. So, okay, so I thought that might happen because people aren't accustomed to that. I should have explained that. So if you would like to speak, you can come forward. Is there anyone else that did not sign up because you didn't know? Come on, come on, that did not know our process. Okay, so if you could just state your name, please?
Good evening. I'm Dawn Miford. I live in the GE plot. I'm at 1109 Adams Road, and thank you all so much for your time and being here. I know most of you, and I appreciate it. So I spent thirty years, right, in corporate America in marketing and advertising, and recently retired from that, and decided to get my real estate license, which I have greatly enjoyed for almost the past year. And I can tell you the on-the-ground feedback from people that come into the plot wishing to buy a home or the Stockade. The very first question that we get is how much are the taxes? And I cannot tell you the number of people that turn away from buying a home here because of the level of the taxes as they exist today. So between 2010 and 2020, we saw a measly appreciation on our property value of about 1.5% to 2% per year. Since COVID, we have seen on average of about 52% appreciation in our overall property value, which is a ginormous gain for the people of this town, right, that have been used to really no gain whatsoever. It's allowed them to take out mortgages, to, you know, create home improvement, put their kids through college, whatever that may be. And, you know, with a 17% increase, everything that I've just talked about that's good will be absolutely wiped away. I am in, right now, under contract. You guys may know the Hillcroft Mansion at the corner of Knott and Wendell. We have very, very strong buyers for that home. However, today was our inspection, and I spent 45 minutes talking with the new potential buyers about what this tax increase might mean for them. And basically, the response was if they felt that the tax increase was going to be approved, that they would pull out of the deal, which is not surprising. So, you know, a lot of really great things have been said by other people that I don't want to readdress. I'm really asking you to think about home values and what that means for residents of this city. This is the single biggest investment that most humans make, and a 17% increase will not only drive down our home property values because we'll have fewer people living, you know, willing to live here, but obviously, people have got to pay that bill. And in today's climate, with what's going on federally, it's going to be a very, very tough proposition for many. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So I have no one else signed up to speak, so I declare public hearing closed. This time, ask for the approval of a minutes from September 22, 2025. Moved by Ms. Patrick, second by Mr. Farley. All those in favor? Aye. Ask the clerk to please read any communications and petitions.
Communications presented to the City Council for Tuesday, October 14, 2025, under official from the mayor, Elizabeth Appointments, dated October 14, 2025, under general, from Joe Anderson, an online form submitted urging the preservation of permanent MEO positions in the 2026 budget to protect career opportunities, morale, and service quality. From Dawn Miford, an email warning that the property tax increase could hurt the real estate market, burden residents on fixed incomes, and negatively impact small businesses. From David Giacalone, an email urging the city to widen the J Street Connector shared use path beyond eight feet to meet safety standards and better accommodate diverse pedestrian and cyclists. From Haley Vaccaro, an email criticizing the proposed 17% tax increase in rising fees, urging the city to reconsider budget priorities to protect residents and the community. From Mary Ann Rissuto, an email suggesting converting a portion of Front Street to be one way to reduce cut-through traffic, improve safety, and prevent blockages for emergency vehicles. And a voicemail from Tony Sarafini regarding concerns about the 2026 tax increase. Under petitions, there were none.
Thank you. Any committee reports from the City Council members? Yeah, right. At this time, we'll have privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda, and I have no one signed up to speak on the legislative agenda, so I declare that public comment period closed. At this time, I ask for approval of the legislative consent agenda. Moved by Mr. Mutivera, second by Mr. Williams. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Now, we will have privilege of the floor regarding general city business, and I have seven people who are signed up to speak. The first person is Ed Leaven Jr., and just a reminder, this portion is three minutes.
Good evening. I've been at these council meetings several times. I have given all of you positive proof of the crimes judges Frost and Falatiko committed. I have left you the court records. Tanika Frost was in administrative law when the mayor appointed her to be a judge. She certainly knew she cannot sign a motion without affidavit or proof of service and forced the clerk to serve me this way. You appointed Falatiko also. He ran unopposed. Falatiko acting on a motion without proof or affidavit of service is prohibited. This is obstruction of justice. Falatiko vacating my default judgment 11 days before a trial is a crime. 18 U.S.C. 1509, obstruction of court orders. I brought these crimes to all of you. Mayor, you are an executive. You are mandated by law to turn Falatiko into the chief judge or governor. Now you are part of the conspiracy along with council members. You can add this to the list. County attorney, district attorney, United States Attorney Barnett, Attorney Grievance Committee, Commission on Judicial Conduct, that threw my paperwork away, but sent me a denial with their address. You, Mayor, are also guilty of election fraud. By keeping Falatiko's crimes off of news channels and local papers, you won a fourth term. I went to election board three times about you and Falatiko. No response. You had the audacity to have Falatiko run for Supreme Court because you knew you could keep the truth out of the newspapers and news channels. I wrote to you, I wrote to your co-conspirator in emails before the election, John DiAugustine, about you and Falatiko. You rewarded him having CDT, CDTA, pay $300,000 to Gazette for parking spaces. He soon after bought the Gazette. Now he has bought more newspapers. Did the CDTA need more parking spaces? Is this what you are calling the new Schenectady with garbage taxes of $200 and $175 a year? You belong in a jail cell next to Frost and Falatiko. I also sent proof to WRGB News and 13 Investigates. How did you reward their silence? Did you get their taxes lowered while you raised all of ours? This is not new Schenectady. It's the same corrupt piece of shit mayor that rewards corruption and fires the honest corporate councils and makes them sue the city for back pay. They've also gone to two Schenectady legislature three times. No response. Let's see what Trump and Bondi do for me. Let's see if they have a problem with corrupt judges and mayor and city council. Mayor can appoint the judges but doesn't have jurisdiction over them. How's that work, Mayor? What a bunch of crap.
Thank you.
I want to see you behind bars.
Hayden Engert?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm here tonight to address a serious failure that is directly impacting the people of Schenectady, the garbage sticker program introduced and pushed forward under President Porterfield's leadership. This program, instead of providing fair and a workable solution, has created confusion, frustration, and other unfair costs for our residents without solving the city's budget challenges. For years, homeowners could simply place their trash out for collection without needing to buy stickers or count bags. Now they must purchase stickers for large items and keep track of the number of bags they put out. The system is complicated, inconvenient, and unfair, especially to seniors and families on fixed income. The city hoped this program would help reduce waste and align costs, but the opposite has happened. Garbage fees have risen sharply, and the city still faces a $4 million deficit in the 2025 budget, which now exceeds $120 million. Landfill tipping fees have climbed to $57 per ton, yet residents are paying more with no clear benefits in service or budget control. President Porterfield ignored repeated warnings about these rising costs and the shortcomings of the sticker program. The result is an ineffective policy that penalizes taxpayers rather than offers responsible waste management solutions. These concerns are not theoretical. They are the same issues we have heard repeatedly from residents as we have been walking door to door throughout the entire city. People are telling us they are confused by the stickers, frustrated by the rising fees, and worried about how this program unfairly impacts them without delivering results. The good news, there are realistic solutions that won't pass more costs on Schenectady residents and can make the system fairer and more efficient. Allow residents to schedule pickups for bulk or access items directly with the city instead of upfront sticker purchases. Bill property owners based on actual services used. This reduces hassle and ensures fairnessness. Invest more in waste reduction in education and recycling programs. Other communities have shown that better recycling can significantly reduce disposal costs, saving cities more without rising fees. Increase enforcement against illegal dumping, which often rises when sticker programs burden residents. Strong enforcement ensures everyone pays their fair share and keeps neighborhoods cleaner. Consider a modest, transparent citywide waste fee that fairly distributes costs across all households. This avoids complicated per-item fees that are confusing and costly to manage. These ideas focus on fairnessness, transparency, and practical service improvements, not on shifting costs to hardworking families. In summary, the garbage sticker program is a failure rooted in President Porterfield's leadership, and it has created unnecessary hardships for residents and has not fixed our city's financial challenges. It's time for new leadership and new solutions that put the people of Schenectady first. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Carrada?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Madam President. Before I get to speak on tonight, which is remarks from the last council meeting from last month, I want to say that an upcoming event that's happening on the 30th, the last Thursday of this month, at my church, Schenectady Church in Adrian, Council Road, 2535 Council Road, on the 30th of this month, provided someone have a trunk, T-R-U-N-K, or tree, they're coincided with Page Elementary School at the same time. If you all can make it, you're all invited, right there, the church property, popcorn and whatnot. Now, before I speak, I want to say, this is strictly my opinion, what I'm about to say. And also, I'd like to have you see my shirt before I say, which basically says, "Stop human trafficking. Godchildren, which we all are, are not for sale." Long when they have, I have. Reason why I bring that up is because it is. From my understanding, the last council meeting, there was discussion among the government body about massage parlors being operated within the city limits. Now, prior to that discussion, a massage parlor somewhere in Rarodham was raided by the police. Hence the fact, what I'm about to discuss with that and another matter, is this. Massage parlors have been known as a hood of human trafficking, and what I call, and has been coming to light, the dark side of human trafficking, which ties in with the dark side of DSS and child welfare, the human trafficking sector, because a lot of innocent lives have been ruined with that. What I mean by that is a lot of young women and children, I've been noticing, I guess you will, have been involved in human trafficking sector because of the very dangerous gangs down in South America area of the world and other areas like that that control the human trafficking sector. Now, with theme with child welfare because of TV shows of the district, NCIS, movies like Sound of Freedom, have all dealt with the human trafficking sector. And thank God it's become to light because as someone's gone through the system of foster care, I'm glad that the dark side has been coming to light. Now, the other issue, back then, Wicked Eight, I came to the government body, I told exactly what the agents of ICE have been doing regards to the community. When they confront somebody or individuals, what they're doing is checking, make sure that your documentation as immigration papers, visas, as student work, tourist visas are corrected up to date and checked in the background. Reason I bring this up again is because a fellow resident has said, and I quote, to the mayor and his council, "I urge the mayor and his council to make this once historic city a sanctuary city," which is against the constitution, mind you, and not work with the federal law enforcement. Now, why would a resident do that? I could tell you why. Because unfortunately, instead of looking up the truth, as I stated, what ICE is actually doing, they rather believe the lies perpetrated by the liberal media and the government bodies like this. I told you the truth about what's happening with ICE and the communities. They don't want you all work with ICE? I know you all work with law enforcement and certain matters and issues.
Your time has expired, sir.
Yeah. I've been summoning up here, Charlie.
No, right now.
And thing is, now this has become an issue of safety. We got hell me coming up, all right? I know you all want, you know, loved ones and all that go to neighborhood parks. You don't want pedophiles and whatnot up there.
Your time has expired. Thank you so much.
I urge the council and the mayor to work with law enforcement.
Thank you. Sean Radigan?
Yeah, so I knew I wouldn't be able to fit it all in four minutes, but anyways, I just wanted to reiterate that point about like new homeowners in the city. I've been here for two years now. Yeah, I mean, the taxes really are very crippling when it comes to taking out a mortgage. They're a very large portion of my payment. That don't go to my principal. You know, an increase on that, I can definitely see how that's a deciding factor for new people coming into this city. You know, especially when you're talking about affordable housing not really being available. You know, the housing stock that we have is aging. We really need to be mindful of that tax rate. On a separate issue, I would like to adjust, as the New Leaf, energy storage is back on the agenda, I would just like to, you know, once again, bring forward the Public Power Campaign, the New York Public Power Campaign, and, you know, ask for the city to investigate funding through the New York Power Authority, which is allocated so that municipalities and state entities can build out publicly-owned renewable power that serves us instead of relying on fossil fuels. Thanks.
Thank you. Crystal Doine?
Good evening. It's like the last party over here knew exactly what I was typing up. Anyway, I just wanted to bring to our attention that there is a distinct issue with human trafficking in Schenectady, New York. In 2024 alone, there was nearly 1,200 signal records to the National Trafficking Hotline in New York State. Now, it doesn't state specifically, you know, what city they're actually coming from. I wish we had a report. We don't even have anything for 2025. And ironically, the statistics really dropped off about reports and incidences in 2020. So Safe Incorporated data from 2019 to 2020, a Schenectady organization assisting at risk youth reported that out of 226 trafficking cases in the capital region between 2019 and 2020, over 90% of the victims were minors. The organization noted that the capital region and Schenectady in particular serves as a hub for traffickers due to its central location on major highways. Now, these are not my words. I didn't want to mince anything. I wanted straight facts. You can look that up on Wikipedia. I did retract a couple of words, but if nobody understands what human trafficking is, I'm just going to educate everybody here. Human trafficking is the act of recruiting, transporting, transferring, harboring, or receiving individuals through force, fraud, coercion, for the purpose of exploitation. This exploitation may include forced labor, sexual slavery, or other forms of commercial sexual exploitation. It is considered a serious violation of human rights and a form of modern slavery. It does happen. It does exist. It's very prevalent in this community. There are not, there's nothing suitable here for victims of human trafficking. I personally have seen it where people, you know, call in to the I personally have seen it where people, you know, call in to the human trafficking hotline and it goes to basically a dead signal. One person can be affected, one person, I'm sorry, can report it, and that one person can affect potentially thousands of people because of the people who are behind the organization. And in addition to that, human trafficking victims face threats of violence from many sources, traffickers, and corrupt law enforcement officials, and even from family members who do not want to have any link with them because of their potentially complicated legal status and their potential language barriers, emotional trauma for trafficking victims. The challenges facing victims often continue after removal from coercive exploitation. In addition to coping with their past traumatic experiences, former trafficking victims often experience both, am I all set? My time has expired.
You can finish your sentence if you like.
It just goes based on, you know, there is a huge problem, there are not enough resources in this area, and it links directly back to, you know, minors, homelessness, which is a major, major problem in this city. Walking downtown, which I often do not do, I did recently, and it's smelling of urine and homeless people living out on the streets, and that's where this starts from. So, I just wish that there was more of a transparent communication between our government here and, you know, enabling some type of resources for children, women, and men, all different backgrounds. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Mayor, Madam President, honorable council members. My name is Tom Kennedy, I'm the Chair of the Republican Party here in the city of Schenectady. I rise to talk about the pending proposed budget. I wish I could say that we didn't know that we were going to be here, but if you remember, we've been here quite a few times. In fact, I was going over our press releases today. Since 2022, we've issued 15 press releases, warning using the ARPA funds was going to put us in the position that we're here today. As I look at the, it's often put in the newspaper that, if you may, I have to take these off, the proposed tax rate would raise taxes $20 per month for a home assessed value of $100,000. Well, if you go on Google, you can go to Zillow and find the average home price is $318,000. If you translate that money of the $20 a month for $100,000 assessed value, that tax bill for that person, including the increase in the garbage fee, which is taxed, whenever you raise the fees, you're raising taxes, that bill would be to that person $868 a year. So, there's not many houses worth $100,000 in the city of Schenectady, and there's some that's quite a bit over $318,000. So, the tax bill is going to be excessive. Now, I heard, as I want to actually heard, as I went through the Daily Gazette, I picked out some things that council members were concerned about, you know, and I, one of the people tonight were talking about the employment problem. Now, look, I understand that we like to keep all those programs, they're good programs. However, when you're faced with that type of an increase, as I go around and I talk to our people, they're worried about eating, they're worried about paying their mortgage, they're paying about rent. So, when these, when these tax bills hit, let me tell you something, everybody's worried about rents here, that's one of your big, big issues, what do you think, the rents are going to go up? So, all these things, all these, this money that's being put out there is going to raise taxes to the point where it's going to affect everyone's lives in the city of Schenectady. So, I urge you, as you go through your budget, is you look at what's needed, very much needed, from people who are trying to eat versus having your, having your programs. I'm just going to leave you with one thing, it was back, back in 2023, the council used unapproved ARPA funds that, that if approved, what they were, will bloat the city's finances to $9.1 million in federal funding that will not be available in 2024, actually 2025. Well, they cut public safety budgets, they know that you're creating an unsustainable budget deficit. So, what you've done with continuing to approve ARPA funding, you have created a deficit now that we're paying. And it's now going to hit every aspect of the city, taxes and city residents.
Thank you.
So, we'll probably talk about this more later, but it's something that I want everybody to be quite aware of, because
Your time has expired, sir.
And I'll leave, I'll leave, yes, Madam President, just want to leave with everybody. We're worried about people eating, paying their bills, and being able to put gas in their tank. Thank you.
Thank you. Louis, yes, come back, and say your last name for me, please.
My last name is Chiketti, rhymes with spaghetti. So, I'm making a claim here that, so, the solicitor's permit fee for you guys is $500. Now, I have permits in Town of Clifton Park, Town of Niskiuna, Town of Bethlehem, and Town of Malta. Now, even if you look at a permit that costs $200, for example, in the Town of Clifton Park, it is $200, there's another fee, but it's not really that much. But I am curious to, one of the concerns I have is, this city requires $500 for a solicitor's permit. Now, knowing that we all have to make a living and we all have to do it the right way, I'm a Christian, I follow Jesus, I'm blessed, and I'm redeemed by His grace, and having said that, I want to do the right thing. But I don't think it's worth it to pay $500 for a solicitor's permit or for the company I work for to pay $500 for, so. For example, New York State has driven out a lot of businesses, a lot of businesses have left the state. For example, Chick-fil-A didn't want to do business in the Albany area for years. For example, over 100,000 residents of New York State leave every single year to go to states like Florida, Texas, North Carolina, South Carolina, due to its robust economy and lower taxes, Second Amendment rights, and we could go on through the whole list. So, me being 25 years old, a young man, and the Lord, and, you know, and knowing my generation's going to have a very hard time trying to find jobs due to inflation, due to taxes and stuff, I would like, A, for you guys to take a step to make the solicitor's permit application, drop it from 500 to 200 bucks, so that people, and not even just with that, with other things too, if you guys can drop down the rate, because knowing my age, people my age are moving to other states because they are fed up with the corruption, with the high taxes, with having to pledge allegiance to be a part of one political party, if you are a state, if you work at a state job, and the fact that, that's very tight here, and, I mean, you could even go to a lot of these buildings in Schenectady, they look like they're falling apart. Who really wants to come here and get a house? I mean, you go to, I've gone to Charlotte, North Carolina, seven times, six times, and they're building and 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 building, and people are, it's massively growing. And like I said, over 100,000 New York residents leave New York State every single year because they're fed up. So, for me being 25, I don't see a future here for me. I don't see a future unless you guys are to decrease the taxes and to refund money to those who have paid outstanding amounts and rates of taxes. So, thank you for your time, and God bless you.
Thank you. All right, I have no one else signed up to speak, so I declare the public comment of city business closed. At this time, entertain any miscellaneous business of the council. Ms. Patrick?
Thank you. First, I'd like to say that we're having a, the Schenectady Shares Group is having a special food drive during the month of October. It will benefit Concerned for the Hungries Thanksgiving Baskets, and it's in conjunction with the, the honor that we received to be the Grand Marshal in the Schenectady's Holiday Parade, so we're excited about that. There is a list of collection sites and selected suggested items that can be found on the Schenectady County website under their Special Events tab there, and I can give that to people if, if they need it. Also, I wanted to mention that today was really great to see the Erie Canal boat, the Seneca Chief, arrived in Schenectady, it traveled from Buffalo, it's heading down, well, tomorrow to Waterford, and then heading down to New York City. It's all in celebration of the 200th anniversary of the Erie Canal, and that was a great, great celebration today, I appreciated being there. Also, this weekend is the pierogi run, the 5K, in the, that's in honor of Polish, Polish American Heritage Month. We will be doing a proclamation celebrating Polish American Heritage Month, and so I wish everyone well that is going to be participating in that run this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mutiveren?
Thank you. I would just like to thank all the speaker who came out this evening to voice their concern about the budget. Your concern is duly noted, and I'm sure that we will take those into consideration as we continue our budget hearing. Our next budget hearing is scheduled for tomorrow, 5:30 PM in Room 110, and I encourage everyone to participate, please join us online, show it up in Room 110, listen to what's happening, and continue to voice your concern, because we do, I do, and I'm sure my colleagues do listen to your concern, and we are concerned. There's no secret that the proposed budget is calling for a massive tax increase and with collection fee. That is something I hope that the mayor and my colleagues, including myself, will work together to come to some compromise, and we can get a budget that is, that is for the people of Schenectady, because we, whatever we do within this budget will affect everyone. It will affect renters, because we all know for a fact, every time there's a rent, there's an increase in City Hall, renters are facing with the burden of rental increase, and we have seen costs increase across all spectrum, and we need to address that, we need to be concerned about costs, and at the same time, we need to tighten our belt. As I have said over years, as being chairs, we need to tighten our belt, and this year, it is the year that we need to tighten our belt more, and to deliver a budget that is for the people of Schenectady. So, please, I encourage you to continue to voice your concern, continue to let us know what's happening out there, and please attend the next hearing tomorrow, 5:30, and then we will, the council, my colleagues and the mayor, we will go into deliberation, and hopefully that we can have a budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor? Mr. Farley?
Thank you, Madam President. So, Madam President, I want to say that, you know, I lived in Schenectady my entire life, and I think that what we're seeing right now, I was, you know, being born and raised here, I've seen what happened when GE moved a significant amount of their operations out of the city, so we've seen kind of the, really the tough times Schenectady has faced. Fortunate enough to witness the resurgence of, the resurgence of downtown and investments coming into our city, which are a really great thing. But what I haven't seen in the good times and even the bad times is people, families actually living in the street, sleeping in the streets of our city. That, to me, is a huge red flag and should, and really is an indicator of how rough things are for some of the people that are living in our city. Working with food pantries and service delivery for all of these years, I see people who are gainfully employed people and people who are really working one or two jobs, you know, hardworking people trying to take care of their families, who are taking advantage of these services at a rate now that they haven't before. So, the writing is on the wall, and it's been on the wall for some time now, but I want to encourage the council to do, working with the administration, is to think about those people as we move into this budget negotiations. I think that if we are, if, you know, if we concentrate on the people who this budget will impact the most, who are our most vulnerable population, and we do right by them, then I think that we will reach a budget in a situation that really allows us to make responsible decisions fiscally, but also makes us uphold our values and our commitment to one another as community members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, appreciate everyone who's come out tonight and their thoughts and your comments. This budget process has been difficult and challenging. Again, there's a number of things that are coming together, against the loss of ARPA funding, city of Schenectady, and our state aid formula receives less than corresponding communities across the state that are very similar, Utica, Rome, Binghamton. Again, healthcare has doubled in the last five years, we're self-insured, so it's not like we can go to another plan. Again, it's managing those cost and wellness programs internally, but again, I look forward to continue discussions with the council to put in place a balanced and fair budget, excuse me, as we go forward in a timely manner by November 1st. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to thank everyone that came out tonight to speak, it's really, really great to hear from our residents that have concerns about our budget. It is, the mayor's proposed budget is, you know, giving us a very large increase, and I believe that as a council, we're going to work together that it's, what we end up doing is not something that is detrimental to so many residents in the city of Schenectady, which it has the potential to be. So, we have our work certainly cut out for us. So, you know, we're, we're working on that, and we have a couple days set aside by our Chair of the Finance Committee, but it may take a couple more days, but we're going to put in the time to make sure that we have a budget that's, that's livable and that doesn't burden our taxpayers to the degree that it currently could. I'd also like to make a clarification on something that was said tonight regarding the, the program for the bulk items. First of all, that was a program that was brought forth by our Commissioner of General Services, not introduced by myself, just want to make clear that is how that, and for the record, that is also recorded, so you can go back and watch. So, that's not a program that I introduced. And additionally, there was a, there was an ask that we do the bag count, and the bag count was voted down. We do not require currently people to count their bags of garbage, that is not a fact. So, it was proposed, we voted, well, the majority of the council voted no, I was one of those no votes. So, just to be clear, a statement that was made today regarding me introducing it, me saying that I was in favor of the bag count, and is it botched? I can't disagree with that, but certainly I was not the person who came up with that that was introduced, again, by our Commissioner of General Services, working in concert with the mayor's office, that is how that program came about, and we do, we need to revisit it. I actually came, brought it to the, to the agenda at least twice, to see if we could revisit that because it was not working out well, heard that from residents. So, I just want to clear up that matter of fact. If there's nothing more to come before the council tonight, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Ms. Patrick, second by Mr. Farley, all those in favor? We are adjourned, have a good evening, thank you.